Post, motion carries. Discussion and action, election inspector list twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five. That was in your package.
That's just a statutory requirement to approve.
I make a motion to approve the election inspector list twenty-three through twenty-five.
Motion by Pam, second.
I'll second.
Any questions? Concerns? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion, action, Main Street discontinuation. This is a follow-up from the public comment at our last meeting with Mr. Minhoes, I believe.
So several pictures are included. Public works got these last time, just showing here on familiar with the layout of the going north on Center Street. There's a dead end sign by the Quick Trip, even closer to which we're actually popping where we want. To the bridge.
So we have first phase is done by Quick Trip. Second one, we have a do not enter private drive, no trespassing. Oh, that one is actually kind of fine. Third picture, you see no through traffic, BTV end road, that's the end of the village street, no kind of more or less. So we have the no through traffic, more or less to say we don't want to go into the private road. And then from the other side, we took following pictures, more or less is kind of everything from highly up and down, which is kind of property. And was able to get some old photos from Google Maps. One of them actually very close, that's a street view of gates that used to be there at the time they were open.
They usually open.
So I don't believe they're there anymore. So also, the very last page, so Google Maps does show this kind of as a route that's, but it has on here, this route has restricted use or private roads. So I mean, it's kind of.
That's new.
So what kind of seems like to me, most runs out of private issue, and I don't know what's the village here.
I saw it.
The only thing we could do is request, I mean, request policing of enforcement of trespassing.
Danny, you actually submitted.
Yeah, but how are this?
You submitted a change to Google. Did you ever hear back?
Still pending. I submitted a couple, one in a private closed road, one is just a private, the Steven Phillips. But it looks like still it's flagged. No, there it has been.
Yeah, it's flagged. Melissa's still in the process of working that whole thing also. If we were gonna do anything, I think we should do something on F. You know, if you've seen those no outlet signs or whatever, no dead end or whatever.
Yeah, then private road. We can't put signs on private roads. Yeah, depending on where you put it.
We have one.
That's not a private road.
That's, that's right.
That's public road. Okay, but we have, this is F.
That's not our signs.
We could, you're saying we could put like a no turn sign in the public right of way along County F? But that's not Village Road, is it?
It's not a Village Road.
The town of Black Earth is.
So that would now go to the town of Black Earth.
Is it a town of Black Earth or county or something?
That's county, yeah.
Well, half of it's township and half of it's Black Earth.
Yeah, I would say half of it is village, because the like, what's the hill?
Our right of way ends where the road stops.
Or the county, okay.
It's still a private road, no matter if it's the township or the village, it's still a private road.
Now, all I was thinking is that we could, you know, that maybe there was something that they could do on F. Either we did it, or they did it, whatever.
They do.
I know that they have closed, I know that they have, but if we have a sign that says no outlet or.
And the village has the documentation in the paperwork to officially have closed that road, right? We've done like a revolution and that's all filed, that's all.
Recognized by the county.
Yes.
Recognized, but, okay. So really, is.
So I think we should, I think we should just let this ride until Melissa comes back and says that Google's not. Because now we see that it's flagged on Google, and it wasn't before.
Flagged as a no entry, or?
Yeah.
Oh, that's probably.
Right, it was not flagged, is this route had restricted usage of private road?
Discontinue the rest of Main Street, they ain't gonna solve it, they're seeing crap.
Yeah.
They're not gonna solve it, Google.
And town of, Village of Black Earth, or does not have, there's, unless there's some sort of protocol, I don't know about. We, we're not gonna go change Google's meetings.
No.
Right, so we.
Next time I fly to California, I'll stop in and see if I can get a meeting.
Take this map with you, will ya, and then say, hey, I'm on the, I'm on the board, man.
Yeah.
Well, I think we, Danny took the appropriate steps. Melissa's working on it, and now this route has restricted usage, that's new. So if Minhoes wants to go to.
I'd say it's a waiting game now.
Yeah, right. And if Minhoes wants to go to the township or to the county, that's the way to go.
Or to Channel Three, that's his prerogative, because really, no more action, we can take as a, as a government.
No, you could, you could discontinue the use of Main Street itself, though. So like his sign, that says private drive, no entry, is truly not legal, because that's truly a street. So, up till.
It's not where he's got it.
Yeah. We're cutting this one anyway.
Yeah. It's facing the street, it's not facing his ground.
Are you gonna, are you gonna?
On the other side of the street, on his side of the street.
Well, I'm saying, the only other thing we could do is discontinue our section of Main Street as a street.
Oh, because it's not, it's not on our life pool?
Right.
That's, that's all I'm saying. We could do that, I'm not sure it's gonna help, I'm not so sure we need to.
Yeah.
That's not gonna change.
Nope, not gonna change that.
This, unless, unless we put up like curb and gutter to block it, but he wants to be able to go through this.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we could, we could put, we could abandon it and block it, and then, but then his access has to be from F, which he doesn't want, I'm assuming.
Well, he could have access there too, it's just driveway.
Right, it is the driveway.
And I think that's kind of what they were asking, but I don't know if that does any good.
You can put up a cattle gate, but it's a hassle when you're. Well, I would think if you put up a, like a roadblock, just to the left side or right side, and pick one, and then just drive around it, but I think most people would not go.
He doesn't got bigger equipment than you.
He can't, he'd get you really with it, you put.
There is an end of road barricade, and then it's his, you gotta go on his property to go around it. Where our road ends, there is a barricade.
Well, then that's about all.
Oh, on this side, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm saying he can.
Oh, that's, oh, this.
Right, yeah, it ends here. And illegally here, as you're going up this road, not turning here, it's a street.
Are we ever gonna address, huh?
Address.
The fact that that, that is a street?
I think we should leave it on.
Hmm?
I think we should leave it on as a street.
Well, you could, you could take it away as a street and keep the property.
That's, why don't we just do that? Because the parks, the parks.
Who uses it in the streets anyways?
Nobody, I'm careful of the.
Yeah, no, no.
Well, I'm, I'm. If you remove it as a street, it's less to maintain.
Well, okay, so he takes.
So where do you remove it from that? Just past your house?
It's, it's his entryway, I mean, right?
You could just do the turnaround there.
You say his entryway, but it's not, it's still a road, but they didn't.
It is, however, there used to be a house there. And that is still, that was still within the village limits. So technically, that, there's a number there that relates to the house that used to be there.
One eleven, one eleven Main.
Right, and that was in, that's in the village.
It's now public.
The house they burned, I mean.
The house that, that they had to take down because of the flood.
Oh, that was one twenty floor, that was township.
That one was a township.
There's an address though on the house that's gotta be taken down yet, which is one eleven Main Street.
Oh, so that's, that's Cooper's.
That's village.
Cooper's, whatever, and it's coming down.
Yeah.
So my question is, why don't we just?
Vacate that.
Vacate that road, keep the property, because the Parks Committee is gonna do something with it anyway. If it only helps the Google fight, it helps the Google fight.
That's kind of rough. That's the only thing we could do.
Yeah.
Would be action.
Not doing good, give away the property or the road, because you can't take the square away on the other side, right, so.
Here, we're putting that in.
So who's gonna pay?
You vacate it, though, you don't have an area for parking into the park eventually, which you could do someday.
But I thought that's not how the park was going to do it, that's.
Right now, right?
Parking where I was intended to go with the house and the garage.
Absolutely.
Not saying that in future, if it was needed.
I think it's driving through, it's not parking there, because he parks all his stuff on the side.
Right.
But the unwritten, the unwritten agreement is that he parks his stuff there, and then he.
No agreement, no unwritten agreement.
No, it's.
There is an unwritten agreement.
Yeah, he, it was talked about, about how he plans it, he maintains it, because then he plans it.
So he says, why don't the board ever send that?
I'm not saying the board, and I'm not saying there's.
It's his own unwritten agreement.
Okay.
We don't, we don't do anything like that, because he takes care of putting his equipment there. Now, if we wanted to say, hey, we're gonna take, you know, make.
Then you, then you're gonna have to tell it for him.
Do more maintenance with it, but right now, it's more or less turned into a.
Which we don't really wanna do much with it, so.
No, so let's just vacate it.
Okay, so to vacate it, probably, I mean, legal costs would be.
Yeah, you'd have some legal cost to it, um, you would lose a fraction of amount of, uh.
Tax.
Room funding, basically, for, could we be down on mileage, you know, three hundred and something feet.
Yeah, so you don't have.
Very modest amount, what funding you're getting off that, it's not gonna replace that road.
You can push the three hundred all the way.
And you're not, we are also not gonna do any improvements to that road.
Can't be much legal.
And then do we.
To vacate the road, because we're not giving away property.
Do we move the streetlight, have to move the streetlights down and stuff?
You can vacate property without giving up the, you can vacate the, the road without giving up property.
Absolutely, and it doesn't cost, there's not much legal involved. The only problem is, if you vacate the road, here's the only drawback to that. If you vacate the road, half of that road is in the township, and half the road is in, once you vacate it, the partial of the road that's in the township automatically goes to burn. You will never get that back if you ever wanted to get, as a road.
There's just no reason.
The township is already vacated.
Yeah, it isn't gonna change anything, that's, it won't.
No, it will not.
So, man, generally, the township's already vacated.
The township vacated.
It can't, it's not road, they can't, they, it might.
On the other side, they vacated.
Yeah.
They vacated up to where it changes from the village to the township, they vacated up to that point.
They can't, it's still legally road, they can't vacate something that's a road.
Well, they did, and there is paperwork for that.
For the other side?
For the other side, past the bridge, yes.
They sold that to.
Okay.
There's not paperwork in the, in that section.
All right, so now what are you talking about, from the bridge up to where the village owns, what do you, this far?
No, no, from the barricade to Center Street, has not been vacated. Or it couldn't be a street.
The township vacated.
Capital Road.
The township vacated.
Beyond the bridge.
Beyond, beyond barricade, from the.
Up to the bridge.
And so did the Village of Black Earth.
Okay, so what part is not vacated?
From the barricade.
From the township.
From the barricade to Center Street.
From the township.
From the barricade to Center Street.
Okay, the township doesn't own from the barricade to the Center Street?
The street has never been vacated, the street is still legally there, so the land couldn't go anywhere. I'm telling you, I already looked into it. So did Minhoes', and they can't find anything that said it's vacated, even though the township don't show it as theirs.
And the township's.
There's no real documents that say it's vacated.
Because I had asked the township if they recognize that as a road.
They do not.
They do not, any part of it.
No.
But like I said, there isn't any documentation that shows.
Right, so it's not been legally vacated.
Well, we've also found with others, other things, that there's no document.
Well, if they vacated, it wouldn't be a road, because we wouldn't have the right of way anymore. So you can't, it, it's still a road, it's not been vacated.
So I don't wanna argue about this, I just wanna know, how do we, how do we resolve?
I think you just leave it alone.
I think we just.
We've done our due diligence.
Yeah.
Obviously, something happened because of, and Google Maps, you know, that yourself, but progression has been made, correct?
I agree with that, but I think this, this, it's not done, you know it's not done, it's gonna come again.
But there's progression, and I think we could just wait and see.
Okay.
It, it would be easier to vacate, even split it up, if that chunk wasn't in the park.
Right, absolutely.
That can never be touched, so they can't own what they want, so.
That's probably part of it.
Yeah.
They don't wanna own part of that, they just want people to stop driving down there.
Oh, you want us to own it.
Yeah.
Okay, no action to be taken. Number eight, the discussion action item, Lift Station Control Panel Replacement.
Um, so, in August, we had a couple issues with one of our, basically touchscreen control screens, in a lift station up on staff in court. Uh, they did do a couple programming things with it twice, um, and it's got us to this point, and it failed. It's just totally, that blacked out. Uh, Lift Station is operating fine, but there's no way to actually control it, as far as going in, changing parameters, usually any type of work that you wanna do on it. So I did reach out, trying to get a price on that, haven't received a price.
It was pretty crucial stuff, right?
Yeah, three, five thousand dollar screen by the time they bring it in, and programs, and stuff like that, three to five thousand.
Three to five.
Can you plug a laptop into it and work it?
Do you know the manufacturer?
Uh, Allen Bradley.
Allen Bradley?
Yeah.
So it's a panel view?
Yep.
Okay, I might be able to read the program out, and, and we're on a new screen, so, I have all the.
If you can get the program off.
I have it, I have all that.
Yep.
So, okay, catch you later on that.
Yep.
Okay, um, so yeah, I guess I have to worry about this, um, one of those things, I guess, I need motion action, once I find out a dollar amount? Or is it something like, obviously, they need it, just get it, or is it not?
I think if we can't get the program, oh, you gotta replace it right away.
Gotta, yeah.
I would file that under an emergency.
Yes, and that's, I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware.
We don't have any motion on that, that's just an operating.
Yeah.
An operating, yep, you're good.
I just wanted to inform everybody.
Thanks for bringing it.
Thank you.
I just run it till it's dry.
Yeah. Nine, discussion action, Village Generator Purchases, this may require a.
Um, so, I believe the last conversation was kind of around budget stuff.
It's not on the.
We, we kinda made a, a goal with it, uh, the one question was, we have to get that from maintenance, uh, Danny, I need to put that in everyone's mailbox?
Yep.
Um, what they say it reads is, once a year, they recommend a full service with low bank testing, um, could be anywhere from a thousand to twenty-five hundred per onset, or end set, per year. So, I mean, there is gonna be some expense in it, but it's kind of a commercial piece of equipment that you have to have that home testing. Into our maintenance. Bringing it back to the board, just kind of a final thing, here's what our maintenance cost is, for that motion action, that I can make a phone call and say, yes, we're going forward with the project, but, you know, G O note, which we currently, in total, is a hundred thousand dollars.
We already approved that.
Is Vanguard capable of doing the other tests?
We, we approved something, the money aside for it, but I think we directed Veerbecker to go after grants, problem is, how long are we gonna wait? That's the problem.
Yep.
Because that price is just gonna go up, right?
Well, the price is gonna go up, and if you have a problem, somebody's basement's gonna flood and shit, a lot of it, so.
Um, so the quotes we had were thirty-eight quotes, obviously, we're beyond that point, um, we changed a ton of the numbers, but I'm guessing, is for sure, probably after first year, just with New Year type thing, so.
What are you thinking, that that should just become a maintenance? I don't.
It sounds like it's a maintenance.
I don't know what you're, I don't know.
And the thought of, my thought on.
I don't hit that money out of our maintenance. So, more or less, yeah, it was a go, and the only question I believe was James, which is kind of, hey, what's this gonna cost us on an annual, annual month, no?
Somebody, somebody said, bring it back.
Somebody did, okay.
Look, I'm here, because you know it's James, go ahead, go ahead.
Tyler, I thought it was me, sorry. Um, but basically, so Tyler asked, what's this gonna cost us every year to make sure we can keep these things running? I got that information, so I guess, are we a go with this, or is the information of maintenance?
It would have to be.
Yeah.
On, on maintenance costs, I'm wondering, we haven't had a, emergency management. Haven't we had one?
Nope. We had one scheduled, and.
What?
Uh, I didn't have enough.
I guess, I guess what, I guess what I'm wondering, it's not my fault, I think that was my fault.
Your fault.
Sorry. Hold on it.
Now that you bring it up. Now that's what you feared.
I guess, my thought would be like, maintenance costs for a generator that's purchased for the purpose of emergency management.
It's not emergency management, it's actually, it's water sewer.
Water sewer, yeah.
Yeah, but it's primarily, it's primarily there for.
It is backup.
Backup emergen, backup due to emergencies, so I, I would classify a piece of equipment like that as something used for emergency, no?
I wouldn't.
Danny, can you tell me what's an emergency management budget?
I mean, it's part of it, so to power the.
We gave them money.
Command them.
Power.
So, do I have that?
Let's go.
Try doing it.
Well, I, I don't think I have that.
Try doing the management without the power.
So I guess by the time we actually get these things online, probably in two, three, I mean, maybe in twenty twenty-four, if you want.
I found it, Danny, thank you.
It's not these generators, maybe twelve months, maybe eighteen months, I haven't got a timeline of when they were coming in, so.
We have a, we have a budget of emergency management of ten thousand dollars. So you're thinking that our maintenance should come out of emergency management?
Because the purpose of the generators is to help manage, help in times of emergency.
And this is something you'll do later.
I'm trying to.
Emergency management. It comes out of regular maintenance cost, and you put it in your budget.
Yep, and it would come out of, yeah, your water sewer.
But we didn't, this year when we did theirs. So we think.
We get them for a year anyways.
Right, yeah.
Saying is, if we have a problem in this year that's coming up, we can pull it from emergency management, because we do have a ten thousand dollar budget in there.
Or not a problem, because we won't have it.
You won't have it, it ain't a problem.
But this is a cost to build into next year's budget, because we will have it done.
But it comes out of water sewer.
But it comes out of regular water, public works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So question is, you, we have a motion to go ahead with the project.
That's what I'm thinking. But the motion was based on, you wanted research, I got some nice research, so I.
I, I'm, I'm okay with the research.
Okay.
Thousand to twenty-five hundred, I wanted to make sure that the generators weren't gonna be like a fifteen, fifteen thousand dollar maintenance plan, and, and we're sitting here going, oh, well, are we gonna fix the roads or the generator?
But at this point, we're also going to tell, who did that ride?
About Howard.
Right, Howard, so you're gonna tell her, yeah, we're in, because then that means our.
Yeah, that's the plan, yeah.
And then.
So we're a go, there's no motion needed, because the.
Motion had already been made.
The motion had already been made, and the, uh, maintenance cost will be built into the budget next year for twenty-four, when the generators are alive, out of public works.
We can work it.
It'll probably be twenty-five.
I think we should work that on our budget, or whenever.
I believe, if we look back at the motion, the motion was to set aside the money in the G O note for it, and then pending, bringing back the amount of maintenance, I don't think it was ever approved to go forward, so I, I'd like to make a motion, we go ahead with the generator, um, purchase.
I'll second. I just.
That was Mitch, that was with what was proposed, that's, uh.
Yes, what was proposed.
So, so everything except this, Billy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mitch, a second by Pam, is there any other questions? Everybody clear on what the motion is, and when it'll be budgeted? We're all good? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it was.
Uh, number ten, discussion action invoices to be paid.
Danny, I have a question with the peat and weight carts.
Yep.
Do that come out of our, that is, that makes sense.
That will be tracked, yeah.
Is that something you're just making?
And will the invoices be paid?
A motion by Scott. Second by.
Uh, I'll second.
Uh, motion on the floor for any discussion or questions, anybody else have any questions?
Uh, the Ashley, what, like tips and correspondence would, would be asking for you?
That was the, um, developer agreement, my own, name slash Orford Garden. It was rewritten. Ellers got involved, they weren't involved prior.
Um, I don't understand that one.
So there's a developer's agreement in early twenty-two.
Bowling alley in the.
Yes, so.
Yeah.
Or garden.
Or four thousand, right? And it goes to Ellers' wife?
So, Ellers was involved with it because they manage our district. So then it would be, there was some language in there that wasn't clear of the benefit to the village or protection of the village, so that was noted to change.
You paid twenty-two hundred to one four thousand?
We paid four thousand.
Or.
Still on that.
Yeah.
The loan was more than that.
Yeah, the loan was more than that.
Fifty grand, twenty-five each.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah, it's twenty-five.
Twenty-five grand.
Four of the grants.
Yeah.
And then twenty-five.
So we needed four thousand dollars for, to Ellers to approve that?
So it's not to Ellers, they have to start advisor. Page here.
Thank you, no other question.
It was twelve hundred for the work on that tip agreement.
So what's the four thousand for Ellers?
And I see one was for joining the meeting, but wasn't that part of the thousand dollars that was for?
Oh, you're on the Ellers' line, so that's the annual reports that they do, so that's separate, so they actually go.
All right, yes, it is separate, yep.
So it was just a thousand dollars for?
For the agreement, lawyer fees, and then the, um, the Ellers thing, that's separate, so that's our annual.
And has that seen invoicing? From them, from the bowling alley?
No, um, it was sent to them, I haven't heard back, but that they reviewed it.
No, that they haven't received any money yet, or they, they've drawn, no, not received.
They haven't signed the agreement yet.
It's been back, it's, it's an easy thing to.
Okay.
So who, who's got the volume for it?
They do.
Okay.
Good, it's not yours?
No, no, no.
Yeah, right. And we have followed up to see if they had any questions, or if we could.
We're nothing.
We've heard nothing.
All right.
Uh, Matt, uh, water tower inspection, so, how, is, was this just a, a dive?
Yep, they just have a robotic drone, basically, that goes in, checks everything out, that's required, five years, and then, next five years, dump it to the inspection dry.
Okay, that's what I wanted, okay.
So every five years, you're doing either a wet inspection or dry inspection.
And we have that, what is it?
We already proved.
No, I know, I know, I know that we're, I know that we had to do it, I just wanted to make sure that it was, for ten years.
Any other questions?
Monthly, monthly cleaning services, there are four monthly cleaning services.
Split month, but.
Everybody pays their share. Hearing no more, we have a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, committee report. Vanguard, right off the bat, Vanguard Commission.
Vanguard didn't have no meeting, our next meeting is January sixteenth.
All right. Uh, electrical superintendent, Sean is not able to attend, he did say that he didn't have anything specific to report. Something else from him.
Else from him. Black Chris Fire District, we met on eleven nine. Um, we had an update on the demo air packs. MSA was the top contender for that. Uh, the new hose that has been ordered is expected any day. Have you seen anything yet?
It's been loaded, I believe.
Okay. Uh, they reported no truck or building issues. Towneberry Roads were checked and concerns on, uh, new dra, on driveways. And, uh, Dunlop Hollow, there's real concerns about passing lanes and driveways access. So they're working with the town on those. And there was a discussion about, um, proposed truck replacement schedule and our next meeting date is January eleventh. That's the fire district. Park Treasurer, financials.
I can hear, um, updated budget amounts are in there from November. So we have a new column L for the amended budget. Um, on the. Wrapping up. Still working with the, some updates and stuff. Nothing, uh, the ordinary, um, in invoices. There was a check for the joint fire district for about seventy-seven hundred dollars. That was the closeout of the FEMA grant that, um, Ellen from the state came down. So we had to work on getting all that paperwork together to submit to the state for them to get paid.
And then that was already transferred.
Yep. So we'll deposit, it got sent to us. It will be deposited and then this check will be dispatched to go to the fire district. That's from the, the FEMA.
And then does that close out?
FEMA. Uh, for the state portion, yes. For the fire. And there's still more for the village that's being worked on with her vacation. Um, the.
Questions in terms of my invoices. Um, the invoice, you see now we're not getting the updated one from when you printed it to today. Are we not approving those checks again? Whatever you had from when you printed these type of checks that, don't we get that list today of the, we need more other checks?
All the invoices too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are you printing them?
James or?
Yeah, because there's, when you print this off, there's still checks that need to be written before they be. And they weren't coming to us and they were already approved before that. And then we finally got Shelley on to where she was printing the last bit of checks that went out or that was going to go out.
Right. But would use some as they were coming in and then the final.
Yeah.
So many days.
Yeah.
These guys do them up to the date. So there's no early.
So if I look at my email from third Friday, there's going to be the exact same ones.
This should be updated, right, Danny?
Yeah.
This is the February twenty-five that was ran.
Yeah.
So this is the updated one. So one that you got in your email was the one that.
I just want to make sure now that we checked again.
Great.
That's something.
We're looking at your budget, right, Danny?
On that last page to me. This says amended budget, actual twenty-four. We have development. Revenue expenses on twenty twenty-four column P. And those equal?
Yes.
Why don't they?
My spreadsheet crashed, so I had to pull it from recovered version. So I think the twenty-four budget is just.
What, eighty-seven fifty?
It's balanced.
Huh?
It's balanced.
Rebalanced?
Yes.
The last, right?
Yeah. There should be no discrepancy there.
Okay. Why are you telling me that said eighty-seven fifty is not sitting out there?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for Danny? If not, we will move on to Dane, Iowa.
Uh, we met on November sixteenth, paid bills, no discharge violations. Decided to run the ad for the new employee for another, or until December. We are going to have interviews December eleventh. Our next meeting is December twenty-first. Seven new employees.
How many applicants or how many interviews you're going to do?
Seven, I believe.
Really?
Wow.
Good.
That's impressive, right?
Uh, economic development.
Great. So we met on eleven twenty. Tried to establish some goals, decided that we were going to show the wave finder signs for the future, right, as we're trying to, I'm trying to converse with the company that printed the first one. We did decide that we're going to do a, we're going to develop a subcommittee to look for visitor center locations. And in that up, our next meeting is December eighteenth. However, we have, we asked.
Go ahead.
You and Tony.
Yeah.
He was going to have drift.
Drift.
The drift list, um, so we're, we might have a conflict, conflict with public works, but I will reach out to you individually to see if we can reschedule public work so that we don't miss that guy in E D C.
Okay.
Is public works meeting in December?
Yeah.
No. No, it's, it's the January meeting.
January.
Oh, the January. Oh, okay.
There might be a conflict in January.
Okay. So our next. My screen's right.
Oh, it's the eighth is what the next public works was asked.
Of January?
Yeah.
Okay. So then that won't con, conflict with us.
Okay.
So just, our next meeting is December eighteenth. And it's at five thirty.
Emergency management.
There's not one, there has not been one set.
I think that we should do that. We should at least pull one because you haven't had one for how long?
Never. Well, I mean, never this year. Never since news.
I remember in twenty eighteen.
I don't believe either.
I remember in twenty eighteen getting yelled at.
Yeah.
Throwing that out there.
Can we schedule it?
Yeah. It was on there.
Did you pressure to do it?
Yeah.
January.
Fire Department.
Uh.
Yeah.
I recall the reason that happened was.
You schedule that one of my.
You need to do something.
You have something going on.
Can you get this date to Sarah?
Yeah.
January ninth.
What time?
Was, I'm trying to think. Sarah, Sarah is in here, so.
She works till five.
Yeah.
She works.
Do you want to throw out a couple dates?
Uh.
Okay.
What would be an alternative in case?
Yep.
January sixteenth.
Okay. Get those two dates to Sarah and then, yep. Good. Anything else? Nope, not for that. EMS.
EMS met on November ninth. Uh, not really much is going on. The truck went back in service, of course. Uh, there's some discuss, discussion about the grants, the flex grants expired and they didn't have all the money spent. And the ARPA grants, they still have money sitting out there and they're working on it. Um, still working on looking for a new director. Having issues with the billing service that they hired. Billing service guy is saying he's got family, so whatever. The next meeting.
What does that mean? The billing guy service has got family?
The billing guy is saying that he hasn't gotten to us. Okay, so, um, the current billing service, they've only billed like a quarter of the bills that should have gone out. And the billing service is saying the reason that is is because I have family issues going on. My wife's been in the hospital, blah, 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 blah. Gary Harp is dealing with that, thank goodness. You know, so, I mean, I know that there was a lot of discussion about going to an outside billing service. But then there was al, also the directorship issues. So, you know.
I get it.
It's a work in progress.
It is, okay.
And the next meeting, however, will be in January. And it will be January.
Thursday, right?
It's a Thursday.
It's like a Thursday.
It'll be January.
Same as fire.
Eleven.
Hang on, it's right here. I'm sure somewhere.
Your first or second.
Second is the.
Yeah.
Huh?
The eleventh of January, second Thursday?
It's a Thursday. I think it's, I think it's the eleventh.
Okay, anyway, sorry.
Sure.
All right, we have, is that it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, gateway to the drift list.
We did not meet since the last meeting. The next meeting is Friday, December fifteenth at nine A M.
Uh, library board and library director report. Since Sarah is not here, would you, Bailey, do you want to give a full report?
Sure.
Thank you.
Do you ask that on November twenty-first? Um, the library board did approve moving forward with the fundraising feasibility study. Um, so that's something that, um. You find the Dane County Library Service Agreement for libraries, for the extension of library service in Dane County, which just. Forces our, uh, reimbursement that will be. Um, we, I got elected as the vice chair of the Wisconsin Library Committee, um, which is a subsection of the Wisconsin Library Association. So I will be doing that in twenty twenty-four. Um, that is a three-year commitment, so it'll be twenty twenty. We have a book club on Saturday. We have a movie night on the sixteenth where we'll be showing the dance clothes. Um, teen zone sign decorating is on Thursday. And we have a winter losing challenge for adults that starts on January second and concludes with a weekday party. Um, and then I also put all of you on the newsletter for the library so that you can get library news directly.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. So you'll get all the programs and library news. Um, and then our next meeting is on December nineteenth.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Um, is that both reports that?
Full report, right?
You're done. Okay, good. Public Works.
Yeah, we've heard of the, uh, public works director.
Okay.
Guys, I'll give, uh, slide through more. Um, we met, uh, Monday, November thirteenth. Uh, as far as Vanguard stuff that was discussed, um, more or less just kind of a substance. Uh, we talked about the generator reservation that I got, maintenance issues, uh, costs. Um, there's a little bit of discussion on the interior painting for the, this building office building here. Uh, some discussion with water main flushing, um, kind of a update of what our practices are and looking in to see if there's anything new that could be implemented. Uh, discussion on Black Chris Creek monitoring devices, um, where other communities lie, play with their funding. Things through discussion with that public works, about that village board, our well too, um, service, P C W is working on that right now. Uh, that came out, uh, November the ninth. So we're down to just one well. Um, at this time, what's been done has, water meters been tested, um, electric boiler and, uh, that service, um, gone through and that's in good shape. Come to televise the well, uh, casing. For thirty years of not being pulled, our well is in very healthy shape, um, very little microbiology growth, um, well is a five hundred and two feet deep. We got to four ninety-eight and then started to hit a little sand, um, so that'll be, bring in the equipment just to pull that last five feet out and then obviously do like wash and scrub out a pipe just to take, uh, any of that buildup off. Um, reached out today just to see if there was any other updates. Um, haven't talked with them since last week. Uh, the guy we met in Oregon with was in Nashville for a funeral. To reach with him at the end of the week to get some more updates and then we're going to put things back together. Um, we discussed, uh, snow storage was in the past few years stored out at, uh, Loli's West Street, so outs, um, where the old quarry area is, uh, storage units out there with the rest of the land for that. Costing us thirty-three hundred a year. Um, we decided to let that lapse, uh, try to do some of our park, parking areas, um, just as snow storage, um, right now. We received, uh, about thirty-two thousand for the L R I P, so L R I P funding. Um, that's a fifty fifty net, so we are looking for a road project that's a total of, you know, sixty-four thousand, three of them. So working with Town and Country to see where, who want to prioritize that money, um. Hopefully be the best use of it, basically. Uh, there was discussion about Premier pulling up the gas pumps. Um, we had no obstructions or any utilities that were in the way for that project. Items we're going to talk about is the creek monitoring again. Tyler was looking at, uh, what do you call it?
Yeah.
So that'll come back for a discussion on public works. Uh, next public works meeting is January eighth, as we said already. A couple of other things with, uh, public works going on. We had some stumps we ground out.
Next at five thirty?
Yeah, it's at five thirty. Um, we have some stumps on Main Street. We ground outs from trees, uh, cold passion at this time just because it's so late in season for salt or, sorry, concrete. The salt would degrade the concrete so quick. Um, a couple of new houses, so there's meter installed there. Leaf season wrapped up. We got spring one more day this week. We're going to try to get out and finish that. Sweeper season, since there's salt on the ground, we're going to call it a bin for the year, uh, sweeper rate great. Have them come in and do some checks on it just to make sure if there's any warranty issues, um, that we're aware of. Um, since we have a six-month warranty, so that'll kind of get cleaned up for hidden storage. Last Friday, Tony and I attended, uh, Town and Country Engineering has a yearly seminar. I got nominated to speak on the panel with, uh, I love the ones that was Jefferson, City of Reedsburg, Cross Plains and Fennmore, uh, were the directors that they had asked for. Um, subjects were how you deal with some of your fat oils and greases in your sewer systems, um, if we've looked into any like brine, uh, solutions, uh, brining for salt timbrels and storm removals, such like that. What are practices that we're doing? What are we looking into? Um, a couple of other topics, I guess. One was the D N R. Later part of twenty twenty-four wants all the municipalities to catalog what types of services are coming into buildings. So whether that's lead, galvanize, copper, uh, pex, such like that, um, how you're going to keep track of all that stuff.
And what you, what are you speaking on?
Am I what?
What did you speak on? You were nominated to speak?
All of those things we talked about, yes.
You didn't.
I did, yes, with five hundred people. So just to see what each one of these is going to be.
Can we get a transcript for that?
They was upset that they didn't provide any liquid courage. Cause there was, I think, again, attendance, there was probably ninety people total.
Oh, do you know what are, whether it's lead or?
So we don't have, um, with our P S C, uh, filings plus the records we have, there was always a discrepancy. There was some reach search done. Um, we don't have any lead services technically. Um, we don't have any lead services, thankfully. Um, no galvanize that I've ever come across in the village. So basically, those ones that you don't get your eyes on, 'cause we're not gonna go out to every one, dig it up type thing. Um, so that kind of just gets classified as an unknown. But we do have records from like, construction projects and stuff like that, you know, Center Street, Red Hawk Rips, uh, Blue Mountain Street, that, we know that was copper that's put in, so we can call that, you know, copper. Going into houses, you know, um, houses we have, they're either using copper, pass the curb stop, or, uh, X is kind of most common that we've ever seen in Black Earth, so, uh, so, looking at, identifying those, putting them on our GS, GIS, our mapping system, just to have those records. That creates spreadsheets that we get forwarded to the, so they have those records.
And brine?
Yep, and with Town and Country, so that's, we working with Ryan and Nick through Town and Country to get that kind of all set up, more or less. It's not a requirement by the end of twenty twenty-four to have everyone who's done, basically just what percentage of your people you have, you know, going forward.
And they called it, so eventually there will be?
Yes, they have, it's like, five years, ten years, I don't know what you'd have, but it's something, just, also they have more information, so. All seven years, issues of copper, or however, they take care of their houses. And, records on hand of that, so more or less just more information, you know. For sure. They realize, and, um, I, I guess that's all I got. Uh, next meeting is January.
Does the village use brine at all?
Haven't done that.
I think so, okay.
There can be a reduction in it. Uh, we only use probably about twenty-five to three hundred, or sorry, twenty-five to hundred to three thousand dollars worth of salt. The test and all that equipment is crazy.
Does these or Cross Plains?
No. Uh, and Jerry from Cross Plains was one of them. Um, you know, they kind of just monitor their salt, that, uh, some communities have gone far as, wanna reduce salt, um, you read, so, so they've gone from huge amount of salt, cutting it down, and their solutions were brine stuff. And also actually, instead of getting till there's, you know, two inches of snow on the ground, they're actually going out half inch of snow, probably, and takes it. So in one way, you're saving.
That doesn't make sense, does it?
But in one way, you're saving the salt money, spending it other ways, but more or less.
You're spending.
We're basically helping make money, so, it, it's kind of a toss-up. I mean, for us, the little bit of money we spend, we can't do the investments in it, but not to say that in the future, you know, you could add something if it cost, you know.
Okay. Okay.
They're forever old, so there's no.
Did you see where they're doing that? They're putting those, yeah. Thank you, Matt.
Yes.
Parks?
If not met, we'll met, meet in January. I don't know when yet.
Date to be determined.
Yeah.
And police?
Um, we did meet, I don't remember the date. Um, you got that? I have it on my calendar. Um, went over all the stats. Things are pretty much the usual, nothing.
It was nine minutes.
Yeah, it was, it was a fast meeting.
Great, 'cause there's nothing.
There was nothing. And we meet every other month for meetings. I don't know when the next one is.
No, no increase in parking, traffic violations?
No, no, not, not really.
Oh, you mean there's not a rent account? Alright. Um, that takes us to twelve. Motion to enter into court session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat nineteen point eighty-five, parent one, parent C, considering employment, for motion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, as in office assist employee wage.
So move. Second.
Question. Can we put twelve and fifteen together? Or we have to go, or come, go up, and then come in and then go back out?
It'll have to be noticed, usually.
We can't put it together?
It should have been.
And?
Combined.
It just has to be, 'cause there's two different, so this is nineteen point eight five.
There's two different statutes. Okay, got it, just so noted, two different exceptions. Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by James, and a second by Pam. Roll call vote.
So is Patchin.
One me. Oh, I'm sorry. Give credit where credit is due. Thanks.
Old Patchin.
Sorry about that.
Pam was just complaining.
I don't know, I think I pulled. Thanks, James. I think I pulled a page out of James' files.
Both session one, alright. Karen Meyer, here, James Doyle.
Thank you, yes.
Bye, Patchin.
Yes.
Don't give me stock, okay?
Pamela.
Pamela, yes.
Uh, Sarah Abson, Karen Bussis.
Yes.
Mitch Abson.
Yes.
Great.
Okay.
I will stop the recorder.
Alright, lock the door quick.
Does that have to be, uh, unanimous, Phil, to enter, because it's just the majority?